Like I said.
Good, how are you doing?
I told Alex to come up, so maybe we'll pray starting three first. Lisa, are we ready? All righty, it is nine o'clock and we are here for the Bonner County Regular Schedule Business Meeting. With that, we will turn it over to Janine for our invocation.
We'd like to begin with a moment of silence for David Tyesdeal, who's in stable condition, also the fallen heroes Morrison and Harwood, if you'd join me in a moment of silence. First of all, Lord, we just want to lift up these, the families of these heroes, Lord. We're just so grateful for the work that they do, so grateful for your hand on this situation, even in this dire time. We know that you're living and moving and breathing into this situation. So I just, first of all, lift them up to you, Lord, and we thank you. Almighty and eternal God, your word declares in Psalm 33:12, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord and the people he has chosen as his own inheritance." On this week of remembrance and celebration, we thank you for the gift of this nation founded upon the truth that all men are created equal and endowed by you, their creator, with uninaliable rights. We humbly ask you to stir within us a holy reverence for the freedom we enjoy and a renewed commitment to honor you as Lord over our land. May this time be more than ceremony, may it be consecration. May it mark a spiritual renewal for, in our hearts and in our communities. Strengthen our devotion to you, oh God, and to the high calling of preserving this constitutional republic under your sovereign hand. Help us not to labor for personal gain but for righteousness. May we be faithful stewards of government, of the people, by the people, and for the people as a reflection of your justice and mercy. Let goodness reign in the hearts of the free people guided by truth, strengthened by grace, and upheld by the prayers of the righteous. Grant that justice would flow like a river, that peace would rest upon our land, and that your name would be lifted high above all powers and principalities. To you alone, oh God, be the glory now and forevermore. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ and in the unity of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please follow the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can you, can we message downstairs? I went down to planning about having Alex come upstairs first. All right. All right, at this time, we're going to actually entertain a motion.
Do we want to without them present?
Well, they are, the attorneys here, so they're wanting to present it. So we're going to change the order of the agenda and the attorney wants to present their piece. So we're gonna.
It's up to you guys.
I, I just don't know what I want to do without staff here to present their report.
So she's messaging Alex to come up. He was printing something. I just went downstairs.
Right.
So we're just going to.
Do we want to move him?
We're going to move him below the clerk and then we're going to do it.
Below the clerk?
And then that way it allows us to get the.
So hopefully we'll have him here?
Yep. He'll be up. I was just downstairs and went message, or talked to him about it.
All right, then I move to amend the order of the agenda to have the planning items directly after the clerk.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on the change of the order of the agenda? Seeing none, deliberation by the board, hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now we'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended order of the agenda.
I move to adopt the order of the agenda as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, deliberation by the board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent, adopt the consent agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Seconded.
All right, Justice Services does have a split cooling AC unit cost of $7,682.14 on the consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, deliberation by the board, hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Clerk Rosedale.
Morning Commissioners, morning everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year '25 claims batch number 38 totaling $756,660.68 and demand batch number 38 totaling $198,332 totaling $954,992.68. I'll do the demand first. The demand's a greater lease payment in the amount of $198,000. The big items in the regular batch, $121,000 for emergency management grant. And we also have self-insured of $205,000. And we have $126,000 for crushed rock, $90,000 for dust abatement, which would be maglorite application.
Does the board have any questions for the clerk before we do a motion? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the fiscal year '25 claims and demands in batch number 38 totaling $954,992.68.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board, hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. We changed the order, so it's going to go to planning. Sorry.
Good morning Commissioners and members of the public, Alex Van, planning staff. So I have a handout from the applicants for that presentation. Well, and I'll go through my staff memo here. So the first item that we're going to hear is an appeal of a vacation rental permit filed number 2021-0030. Sorry, let me get to my spot here. On May 19th, 2025, planning staff reviewed and approved a renewal for an application for a vacation rental permit in accord with BRCRC 12-484. On June 2nd, 2025, the applicant provided a letter stating their intent to appeal the decision by staff and the accompanying fee, and the following staff memo regarding this file will provide more in-depth analysis. So, a little background on this, in 2021, the applicant applied for a vacation rental permit. At the time of their application in 2021, the occupancy limit set forth in 12-484 allowed for three people per bedroom plus an additional three people or four people per designated parking space, whichever is less. The application stated that the applicants had five bedrooms and three off-street parking spaces when this application was granted. The applicant was given a maximum occupancy of 12 people due to the allotted parking spaces. 2023, the applicant applied for a renewal of their permit and no changes to their occupancy. In 2024, the Board of County Commissioners adopted ordinance 707, which made amended, which amended the original occupancy standards. The newly adopted ordinance allows for two people per bedroom plus an additional two or three people per off-street parking space located on all the property, whichever is less. Additionally, this new ordinance stated all current standards of this section as existing and amended on the submission date of the application for renewal shall be met in order to obtain the vacation rental permit renewal. So in 2025, when the applicant submitted a request for their vacation rental permit renewal, they were required to meet the standard set forth in the current ordinance. The renewal of their permit was approved on May 19th, 2025. However, due to the number of available off-street parking spaces located on the property, their maximum occupancy was limited to nine people. The applicant has stated that they have available parking, which they have been using for their vacation rental on a commonly owned HOA lot within their subdivision. BRCRC 12-484B1E regarding application contents requires a parking plan to show the number of off-street parking spaces provided on the property and the maximum number of vehicles allowed to be parked on the property. Additionally, BRCRC 12-484C6 requires one off-street parking space shall be provided for each three persons of occupancy in a vacation rental. No more vehicles shall be parked on the property than there are designated off-street parking spaces. An ability to provide the required off-street parking will reduce the permitted occupancy. The site plan submitted with the vacation rental permit application shall clearly identify the location of the required off-street parking. All accessory uses and additional parking in conjunction with the vacation rental shall be located off-street. Off-street parking in connection with a vacation rental is prohibited. BRCRC 12-261 Administrative Appeals allows for any administrative decision rendered by the planning department to be appealed within 10 business days from the original decision. Planning Department rendered the decision on May 19th, 2025. These appeals do not require a public hearing but can be heard at a public meeting with the Bonner County Commissioners where the board shall affirm, reverse, or modify the planning director's decision. 12-261 states that an administrative appeal shall not be granted if it would function as a grant of special privilege or provide an exception to the regulations contained within this title. And on June 2nd, 2025, the applicant's intent to appeal and their appropriate fees were received by the planning department. So, in the packet, you'll see a familiar worksheet, so vacation rentals are covered under Lupa. So the board will be required to make a reasoned statement decision on this. And I apologize to everybody for the length that this may take. So the first standard is administrative appeals. So the staff analysis on May 19th, 2025, planning staff reviewed and approved a renewal application for a vacation rental permit in accord with BRCRC 12-484. On June 2nd, 2025, the applicant provided a letter stating their intent to appeal the decision by staff and the accompanying fee. See Appendix A for the applicant's appeal letter, and this code section has been satisfied by the applicant. So next, we'll get into the vacation rental standards. I will skip reading the ordinance and I will go to the staff analysis for all of these unless the, unless the board would like me to read the ordinance.
I don't need the ordinance, Commissioner Corn.
Okay.
So we're good.
So this first staff analysis is for 12-484A through B. The original permit was approved by Bonner County Planning in 2021, and there have been two applications for renewals in 2023 and 2025. The original permit included all of the required documentation to be considered complete. However, the renewal applications do not require the same information be provided unless there's a change in service, address, local representative, parking, or site plans. Property has been owned by the applicants for the length of the permit. All fees were paid in accordance with the adopted Title 12 fee schedule, and the renewal, renewal application was deemed complete on May 19th, 2025. Next is standard C. This is where the, the ordinance that's being challenged here, the C1D, "All current standards of this section as existing and amended on the submission of date of the application for renewal shall be met in order to obtain the vacation rental permit renewal." The applicant provided a renewal form to the county within the 60-day renewal period prior to the expiration of the permit. A point of contention from the applicant was in relation to Section D of this provision. Prior to the adoption of this provision in 2024, the occupancy standards were as follows: three people per bedroom plus an additional three people or four people per parking space, whichever is less. Ordinance 707 established, among other things, a new occupancy limit of two people per bedroom plus an additional two people or three people per parking space, whichever is less. The applicant did not provide any more off-street parking spaces on the property nor any more bedrooms as defined in BRCRC Title 12, Chapter 8. Therefore, the original occupancy of 12 people was changed to nine to align with the adopted ordinance. Number two, this is about ownership. The original permit was issued in 2021. There's been no change to the ownership since the issuance of the original permit. Number three is for occupancy. So prior to the adoption of the ordinance, again, I, I won't restate it. That was essentially the same analysis as previously stated. But there's no evidence that the applicant, there's no evidence that the applicant is using an RV dwelling unit to provide additional sleeping areas, which would not be applicable to this application. Number four is not applicable to this application. Number five, access. It was determined that this is a privately owned and maintained road, so there's no jurisdiction over any access permits, so this code section has been satisfied. Number six is parking. So prior to the adoption of the ordinance, it was that parking, the parking standard was four people per parking space, and it is now three people per parking, per parking space. And this application remained with the same five bedrooms and three off-street parking spaces on the property that were previously stated. The applicant did not provide any more off-street parking spaces on the property. Therefore, that their, their occupancy was changed from 12 to nine. Per a phone call with the applicants, the applicants have been using an HOA common area for overflow parking for their vacation rental. This section states that all off-street parking servicing the vacation rental shall be located on the property. The use of the common HOA lot is not permitted to accommodate more parking for the property. Number seven, solid waste disposal. This has been satisfied. Number eight, this has been satisfied as well. Number nine is not applicable. Number 10. The, this is not applicable, has been satisfied. Number 11 has been satisfied. Letter D has been satisfied. Letter E has been satisfied. So just a quick synopsis of what we covered. So on May 19th, 2025, planning department approved a renewal of a vacation rental permit, VRP 2021-0030. In accordance with the BRCRC 12-484, the planning department issued the VRP to meet the current standard set forth in this section, which included a change of occupancy from 12 people to nine people based on the number of available parking spaces located on the property. Ordinance 707 not only updated the occupancy maximums in this section, but requires that all permits in order to be issued or renewed shall comply with the existing version of the ordinance. So the applicant has stated that they should have a maximum occupancy of 12 people due to their prior permit issuance and subsequent renewals prior to the ordinance change in 2024. The applicant has stated that there is available parking on a commonly owned HOA lot. However, BRCRC 12-484B1E and C6 require that all parking be located off-street and on the same property as the vacation rental permit. And that concludes my staff memo. I can answer any questions if you have any for me.
Does the board have any questions for staff? Commissioner Corn?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant. And sir, please state your name, please.
I will do that. Thank you Commissioners. Good morning. I'm A.T. Miller. I'm an attorney with the Spokane office of Kootak Rock. And here representing Bill and Karen Ferguson, who are sitting on the second row there. And they own property on Priest Lake in the Huckleberry subdivision. And they've had a, as Alex, I think, appropriately laid out, they've had a permit there for a vacation rental since 2021. But in this case, it's about their property rights to have off-street parking. There is absolutely no evidence that they have had any on-street parking that has created any health or safety or welfare issue with, with that neighborhood and with the Priest Lake area. So since 2021, they've had a 12-person occupancy based on the five-bedroom house that they, the cabin that they have there, and then through three cars that were, that could be parked in the driveway, times the four persons that the former ordinance allowed so that they have the 12-person occupancy. Under the new law, and I, if, if there's questions, I can have Bill and Karen testify, but they, they had no idea that the, that when they submitted their application in May of 2025, this, this May, that there had been a change in the law. Otherwise, Bill and Karen would have submitted an updated parking plan that would show that they actually do have a property interest in the HOA common areas where they have, where extra cars, more than three, can be parked off-street. We actually have submitted exhibits with our brief that show where they, where these areas are. They're only 200 yards away from the cabin. And absolutely, there has been no on-street parking that has created any sort of issue that the county commissioners should be concerned with. So we have a win-win solution. There's, there is a lawful solution to this issue in that if you look at the statutes and the case law that I submitted and cited in my brief, my clients do have a property right to park in the common areas. There is an undivided, it's, it's interesting, in law school, one of the first things we learn in, in property law is that property comes in a bundle of rights. And, and sometimes professors call it a bundle of sticks. But one of the, one of their property rights is to have access to the HOA common area, parking areas. And that is where they, if there are more than three cars, that is where they have a right to have extra cars parked for, which would allow them to have their 12-person occupancy. So I urge you to read the brief and look at the, look at the case law and the statutes that I cite. The tennis court in the boat trailer area are, again, very close by to the, to where the cabin is, but they have, but if you look at the ordinance, there's a solution. If you analyze the ordinance, they just need to have a property right in the area where cars are parked, and they do have that. As Alex stated, there's no adverse impact to the health, safety, and welfare for, to, to have 12 people in this cabin as opposed to nine. And there is a, as, as stated in the brief, there's a, a quite a substantial, several thousands of dollars, up to $35,000, impact if they are not allowed to have 12 persons in their cabin. This cabin is very popular. There's a, the exhibit D, I believe, to my brief, is a, is a comment from people that have stayed there. It's great for family reunions since it's, since it's, has allowed up to 12 people. And so we would ask that you modify, you look at the law, and you see that my clients do have a property right to have these extra cars parked off-street in the HOA common areas. It's consistent with the ordinance. It's consistent with your policy. And it's, it's, there certainly is no health, safety, or welfare problem by allowing the Ferguson's to have 12 people in their cabin. And so we're asking you to modify the permit. I would ask that, there's a public records request that is, I had an email from your public records officer last night that said that she is still working on getting me some records. She thought she was going to be working on that all day today and that I could have them for tomorrow. So I, I don't know if you're planning on making a decision today, but I would ask that you hold the record open for a week and for me to review those documents that maybe, maybe. hold the record open for a week and for me to review those documents that may be pertinent to this issue. But we think that even with the documentation and the brief, my legal argument and the factual argument that my clients do have a property interest to have these cars parked off-street in the common area, that you should amend the permit and allow them 12-person occupancy. And I'm open for questions, and if you guys want to talk to the Ferguson's, I can have them come to the mic and if you have questions for them.
I don't have questions for them. I want to ask Bill Wilson a question. If he is requesting the records stay open, is it reasonable that we just do this next week? Because if it is, because that's what he just asked for. He did a records request for something he doesn't have.
Well, the appeal was filed and heard within the statutory limits that we have. So if you continue to that time, I don't see a prejudice either to planning staff in the county or to the applicants, other than maybe the gentleman's time having to come back for a follow-up.
Yeah, I don't think I would need to come back, but I could either be on Zoom, or I could Zoom.
You could do it by Zoom, so because when your last statement was, you essentially don't want us to make a decision until you can see the records that you requested that you don't have, correct?
Correct.
And so to me, that makes this a case that we should continue to next week to allow him the time to get the document, and then you can come by Zoom, and then we can make a decision at that time.
Yeah. Or another idea would be that if there's no document that really needs to be added to the record, I could just let you guys know that, and then you guys can make your decision. Although, again, I can be on Zoom.
Okay. So what does the board think about that? Because given his comment, I feel like this decision, it requires us to wait until he reviews the document he requested.
Yes. Given they're the ones making the appeal, and they would like more time, I'm fine with that.
So we can entertain a motion to continue this to next week and bring it back on the agenda, and then you can be in communication with him to set up the answers.
Could I have Bill or Karen come to the mic, just ask them two questions before you make that?
To ask them two questions?
Yeah, to ask them two questions.
Sure.
Yeah. Why don't you guys come to the mic and introduce yourself?
Hi, commissioners and everyone. I'm Karen Ferguson, and I'm here with Bill Ferguson. We're the owners of 216 South Sandy Shores Road in Idaho.
So Karen, when you applied for this permit this year, did you realize that the parking had changed?
No, absolutely not. We, as said, we've been renting for four years, and the ordinance has changed, but we got no notification whatsoever that there was a change. Therefore, we applied because we were on a two-year application renewal that has now changed to every year, and so '25 was our next time we were supposed to do that.
If you had known that they had changed the car occupancy from four to three, would you have submitted an updated site plan showing where you do have off-street parking rights?
We absolutely would have, but there is no additional line item on your renewal process to be able to put additional parking. So our parking was structured and came out and measured our driveway and all of that back in '21, and we just used the same plans. There was, there's no additional line item that you can put into the application form itself that shows that.
And you do have a property right to either the HOA common area at the tennis court or at the boat trailer lot?
One of the things that I think everyone, commissioners, you need to know is Sandy Shores development, the development itself at Huckleberry Bay was, is about 31 years old. In other words, our house was already on the property before the plotted lands of Sandy Shores went into development. There was another house that was developing 31 years ago with the plotted land itself. Two or maybe three of our homes, ours was already there, were established by the lot size, the ability to park was very limited because we have a very narrow road in Sandy Shores itself. It's extremely narrow, and the plotted lands were such that, you know, the land itself only allowed for very short driveways, even though there were big, our house is big, to allow for three parking spaces. So no fault of our own, we bought our property five years ago, and we absolutely needed, and the design committee at the time, 31 years ago, along with Barbieri, the developer, realized that the plot of lands, there were going to be few with short driveways. And so they allowed, the design committee actually allowed the common tennis court area to be used for these short driveways because we would have to have our family and friends do that as well. There is no way that our house, which can sleep 16 people, can park in a three-car garage or a three-car parking spot.
And have you ever allowed any on-street parking at any time?
Never allowed any on-street parking whatsoever.
Okay, that's, I think that's all the, I think that's all the questions I need to ask.
Thank you.
Unless you guys had questions.
So let me ask a question about the parking, just to you in terms of legal standing.
Sure.
So is it that this is just a development where all homes in that area have access to an overflow parking area?
Yes.
So it's not, so it's an interest, it's not an ownership, but it's an interest in ability to park?
It's an interest in, just a little law school lesson, is it under property law, they have a undivided interest in the property where the, which is a common area in the homeowners association. So yes, they do have, everybody has a right to that common area.
Okay.
So does that make it a first-come, first-served, or are there designated number of spaces per property owner?
Yeah, take a look at, there's a photograph of the parking area, and there's, yes, it is first-come, first-served, but there is no, is there any time?
It was designated for the short driveway, again, back in the day, by verbally, that we could park there, and everyone has been parking there on a first-come, first-served basis.
But is there any time?
There is a tennis court area in that same area.
But is there any time when there is no room to park off?
No. I think that you guys have answered the question that he asked.
Okay.
Okay? So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to continue this to July 8th, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion, save, save so moved.
So moved.
So moved. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on the motion to continue this to next week? Wayne Martin, your hand has been up.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. May I ask a couple of questions towards the commissioners? Or is it just on your proposal to hold it over?
It's only the hold-it-over motion because we're not making a decision on this one.
All right, I'll wait till then. Thank you.
Any further comment from the public? Deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And so Alex will make sure you get the Zoom link so that you can just sign on and you don't have to come, and you guys can also log on online if you don't want to drive over this way for it.
Okay, we appreciate, appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I should say, make sure to look at the exhibits.
Yes. All right, Alex, your second one is up. We moved all of planning up. Sorry.
Sorry. Okay, thank you, commissioners. So for my second item, this is an appeal of a request for a refund for a building location permit. This is for BLP 2024-1097. So the following request is for a refund of $1,315 for the building location permit listed above. So the application was deemed complete by the planning department on October 22nd, 2024. On October 22nd, 2024, the planning department determined that the proposed structure was within a mapped wetland per the GIS map and required a wetland reconnaissance or revised site plan from the applicant. On March 4th, 2025, the applicant provided a wetland delineation from Tom Dubendorfer, suggesting that the wetlands are not within the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Per the applicant, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers denied their jurisdictional determination request. On June 17th, 2025, the applicant withdrew their application and requested that the planning director refund the fees paid. Director Gabel denied the request for refund. That is attached in the emails in the different exhibits. So the applicant has provided a detailed explanation of their request in the attached email, and per BCRC 11-116, any decision made by the planning director shall be appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. And I can take any questions if you have any for me specifically on the BLP.
So it was determined that there were no wetlands on the property?
There's determined that there are wetlands on the property, but the opinion of Mr. Dubendorfer was that they were not jurisdictional, which comes back to the Supreme Court case from the Sackets up in Priest Lake. But the Army Corps of Engineers ultimately has the determination power of whether or not they are jurisdictional or not, which essentially just means that they're connected to navigable bodies of water. And from what I understand, we never received a letter from the applicant from the Army Corps, but they indicated that the Army Corps decided that they are jurisdictional wetlands. And so that's why they're withdrawing their request.
But the county did its portion of work related to the building location permit. Is that the rationale for why it was denied as a refund?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff?
So I just want to summarize for clarity. So staff made the applicant aware that there were map wetlands in the property and delineation was required and that they were essentially at risk with their application because of that fact. And then staff went through the associated review, agency coordination, and administrative processing of the permit?
That's correct.
Is there anywhere on the BLP that states that if the applicant cannot build in that location for any reason, that they're due a refund of the BLP?
I don't think there's anything codified that says that specifically. We did give them the option to relocate their building, but from their request, it sounded like it would be too costly to them. So their request is based on, or different items for appeal here, let me pull, let me grab that real quick. So their request for appeal is based on 11-108E, which is an undue hardship. They stated that the shed was placed with the permit paid, and then they're in the appeals process with the Army Corps of Engineers. But from my understanding, we never issued the permit, so the building was still placed without the building, or without the permit being issued.
So when I read through her, the documents that the applicant submitted, it looks like they put $12,000 into the project and the building location permit was being done after the fact. And when they were told that where they placed the building essentially was not where it could be placed, but that they could move it, they wanted to abandon all of it because they can't put it where it goes essentially.
That's correct.
And so, and that's part of her argument is they basically already did it, and so it was an after, after the fact.
That's correct, and there is no indication that even with withdrawing their application that the building would be moved from that location, which would constitute a building violation, assuming that they already have one listed on their property.
Okay, all right. Any further questions?
I did read in there that there's a Northside Fire impact fee, I believe, of $700, and they were wanting to recoup that. That's part of the BLP fee. And that would be if they wanted to recoup that, they would have to deal directly with Northside Fire.
That's how I understand it as well. Yeah.
Anything further? Commissioner Donkey?
No further questions.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the appeal of request to refund BLP 2024-1097.
Based on the information before, as I move to uphold the planning director's decision and deny the applicant's request to refund the fees of BLP 2024-1097.
There's a motion and a second. Any public comment on the motion on the table? Seeing none, deliberation by the board.
I, it's unfortunate that they're having such limitations on their property, but they chose to move forward without a permit initially and then at risk when they applied for the permit. So they really knew what they were getting into through the application process, it would appear. So I don't see, you know, the county has invested the cost and resources to review and complete the application, and so if we were to refund the money, then essentially we're asking all the rest of the taxpayers in the county to bear the cost of somebody else's mistake.
So this is a fee-based apartment when it comes to this, and I think it's fair that we need to mention that, that when the county planning staff does spend time on these building location permits and all, that that's not being funded by the taxpayers, it's being funded by the fee of the building location permit. And if they did the work and spent the time on that, it pulls back to what you just said, that's what they paid for.
I think also you can add that had they gone to planning before they placed the building, planning would have helped them pick the location, that it would have worked on that particular property, and there would have actually been no negative outcome associated with this. And I think this is why we are focusing on making sure we enforce building location permits, because we also have an obligation to protect wetlands as well. So I concur with the motion on the table. Any further deliberation?
Yes, I would just like to state again for the applicant that if they choose to try and get their $700 back from Northside Fire, that's still an option. That's something that they would have to deal with, with Northside Fire themselves.
Anything further? Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We put Parks and Waterway all the way up. Now it's Parks and Waterway. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Mazzoller, Director, Parks and Waterways, rec. item number one. Attached for your consideration is a Bonner Park West contract naming Charity Hinchall as the vendor park host. This is a monthly contract in the amount of $300 per month being paid to the county in exchange for parking a food truck in the host site. This will be starting today, July 1st through September 30th, 2025, and this has been approved by risk auditing and legal. And so to clarify kind of how this came about, we're looking for alternatives to provide services for our parks. So instead of paying a camp host to maintain our bathrooms, in this contract, you'll see in the packet, Charity has self-elected to clean our bathrooms twice a day, pick up trash in the park, and keep an eye on the place from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. So this is kind of a win-win where the amount that she is paying is also going to be covering our utility bills for water and electric. Historically, our utility bills are roughly around $200 a month. So not only will we have eyes and extra hands on the park, but we'll also be covering
So just to be clear, never fails, huh? So she's provided an insurance coverage, so there's no liability to the county for her being there.
No liability to the county.
It sounds like she's pretty much thought this out pretty thoroughly, under her eyes and crossed her t's. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't embrace this for this summer, at least.
Yeah, and this is just going to do to, since the original site host contract was denied, we weren't really for sure which way the park was going. Since then, the toilets have remained off. We've placed a portable toilet unit out there. With 4th of July coming up, if this contract's approved, we're hopefully going to be able to get those bathrooms up and running, and then also maybe the sprinklers will bring back the dead grass. But fingers crossed, either way, this is good for Bonner Park West and is actually of a benefit to the city of Priest River, the folks of Bonner County, and our department.
So I didn't see Christian's sign off. Did we make sure we looked on our insurance stuff, Bill? I know you signed off, but I'm hearing.
Christian did sign off.
I think you did look at that, yes. It's checked on this.
It is checked, but I'm. It is checked, but I don't see it attached. And that was an issue before of wanting to confirm what our actual policy says when we do things like this. So did you see the insurance policy that he's saying that we would be in compliance with? Because that, that's my only concern, is making sure that-
I don't recall off the top of my head for this item, so I can't answer that question.
Okay, so I, I think it's a good idea, but I want to be very clear that we read our actual policy for this situation, because we haven't done this before. And there are, like with some decisions that were made before, people said it's always how we have done it. And when I read the insurance policy, there was an exclusion there. So I want to make sure we read the policy and that the county is covered for this.
The policy she's providing for her own liability?
No, us having someone on our property and what vicarious liability we could incur, that's what I want us to be sure on, not just a checkmark. And so I, I want to make sure we look at our policy that we're covered to do this.
Just look, so there is an email in the file?
I'm wanting the, the policy page, because we had a case where we didn't actually have what we thought we had. And so that's my only question. I know, I, I understood the comment of saying it's approved, but we haven't always been looking at the actual policy. So if there's a risk, I, I saw that, I got that email. It's the policy page. My question is.
Are you, are you looking for the policy page from Charity?
No, from our insurance. Are we covered to have a third-party vendor on our property that carries their own in this type of situation?
Well, if she's providing prime independent coverage to address all of the behavior, why is that relevant?
Because it's, it's still the county property. And so you're putting another person in the middle of the county property. And so you, we run the risk, for example, out at that park when somebody was swimming and they hit the ladder and they cut their leg. So then they called, contacted the county saying, well, it's our park, it was our ladder, they got injured there. So then we have to look at our risk associated with that. I don't know the ins and outs of this particular one in our policy, and I want to make sure that there's not an issue there. I think it's a great idea to address that we don't want to pay for a park host. I just want us to cross off the insurance piece.
Yeah, again, I, I think that if we're having, it's not clear to me that that's as important here, given that she's providing insurance to cover all of her behavior, which is different from the situation you just described, which would just be somebody utilizing the park. We, we require her to provide her own coverage to make sure that we don't have, that it's not our problem to give.
I, no, I don't not understand that. I just want to make sure we're looking at what we are insured for, because I don't know all the ins and outs of what could happen in that. But I know that we had some exclusions on other things that we thought we were able to extend coverage to or that we were covered for. And so, for example, like when we were looking at the, uh, underinsured versus uninsured, yes, we are insured for something, but there can be exclusions that say we're not covered to do something. That's what my concern is. I don't know, because I didn't look at the policy.
Right, so I don't know what Christian did before he offered his support for this, so I just can't speak to that.
Okay. I know, I just want to, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that there's not an exclusion for something, because you could still, when things happen in situations, people go after the person with more money, which would be the county in that. So I want to make sure that we're protected in that regard. It's not just that someone has insurance, it's what is our liability associated with that? I just want us to check that out.
Yeah, I, again, I think I saw Christian last he was walking. When I drove in today, I saw him walking over here.
He is here, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine so long as our policy doesn't have an exclusion that makes something like that where we would have more liability. I just want to check that off, because we haven't been reading the policies from top to bottom. And that's one of the things I've brought forward on some of the issues we've had. That's my only comment on it, is I want to make sure there's not something there that makes us more liable, because people don't go after the small truck. They will look to the county, because it looks like you have more money. So that, that's my only comment on that. But I think it's a good idea to bring in money versus pay, pay someone to be there. All right. Any comments by the board?
Uh, I would like to commend you on bringing this to us. I understand your concerns. I don't share those, I guess, as, as much as you do, because they, our, our liability isn't really changing, in my opinion. What little bit, it would be changing by having a vendor on there, she's covering. So I think we ought to move forward with this, is my personal opinion. We have the Fourth of July weekend here in a couple of days. And instead of spending $1,400 a month, which was our previous plan, we're actually going to be bringing in $300 a month. So I think it's a good win-win situation. If we want to look into our insurance policy, we can still go ahead and do that, um, this week, and see if there is any changes that need to be made. But I think this is a timely matter, and I think we need to go ahead and support it and vote on it.
Okay. Any questions before you request a motion? At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the 2025 Bonner Park West vendors host contract naming Charity Hinchall as the vendor park host. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this motion? Wayne Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record. Do you guys have a requirement for a minimum liability from an outside vendor being on county property, such as in this case? The second item that I have a question about is would you be able to give her a, a week of availability for there, so that Christian can go through and give you what information you want because of the Fourth of July weekend? And then if there's a problem, then bring it up next week to change the opinion? Does that make sense?
It, what you're saying does make sense. And so I was asking my question of whether or not Bill reviewed that actual policy. So what I'm going to do is, I'm fine moving forward with it, I'm, but I'm also going to go across the street and talk to Christian about our actual policy. And then if have an issue, I'll bring it back before the board afterwards. I just want us to read our policies and not just, just because someone else doesn't have insurance, that's not how it works, because we, just like, you know, when we get sued, it's not that we get, it's that that we get sued costs us money. And so I want to make sure that we're completely protected and not doing something, because as commissioners, we can do things that specifically our insurance policy says you're not covered for if you do that. I just want to check that off and say I've seen it, because we've had a little bit too much of saying we have insurance, but not actually reading the policies. This is something new and we should have, I would like to see that coverage attached to we are covered for engaging in this as a county to reduce liability exposure to the county. This is a fantastic idea. I just want to make sure we check our boxes on insurance and risk associated with it, because we don't have a county policy about this type of vendor. This is something new. And so we have it, this is 100% brand new to the county. And so it's a great idea, but I want to check the fiscal responsibility and liability of that. So I'm promising that I'm going to go across the street and look at this policy. Christian is probably watching right now, pulling it up, because he knows I'm coming across the street. But it's a good idea. So my question is a valid question, but so is Commissioner Corn's comment of it's good to bring in the money. I just want to make sure we're mitigating as much risk as possible.
I want to thank you, Asia, for all that, because that is something that is critical and, and shows responsibility to the county that looking at the liability issues, because those do, do get brought up and they usually go after the people with the most money. Thank you.
Yep. Any further public comment on this item? All right, deliberation by the board? Any further? All right, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Fairgrounds.
Excellent. Rec item number two, again, still Maz Oler, still Director, Parks and Waterways. So in the six ten twenty five business meeting, we were trying to figure out how to fund or properly take care of the parks due to health and safety concern and sanitation. During that meeting, it was voted to, yes, that we should move money around and allocate it to Parks and Waterways to have a short-term solution to take care of the Fairgrounds Park. At that time, we did not have a resolution wrote up, and in order for auditing to move the money around, we needed to have an, a resolution signed. So today's only request is that we have a resolution to move the money into the proper line items. There's really no debate as to whether or not we should be doing this, it's just a matter of signing the resolution.
So I think there's a clarification, and I, I think given the amounts, there's some overlap here with responsibilities, so it's still appropriate. But my understanding is that the Sheriff's Office, with their inmate work program, has actually taken on some of the mowing and weed eating responsibilities now to assist with that. But I understand there are still other responsibilities associated with the maintenance of the park. And so I still think this is appropriate, but I just want to put all of it on the table that we have two different county entities working together to help maintain the playground park at the Fairgrounds. And just want to make sure that the board's aware of all of that with the decision.
Were you aware of that, Matt?
Uh, so the sheriff never contacted me or reached out, but I am extremely happy to have extra assistance. More hands are better.
Yeah, that, that piece of information came out during one of our budget meetings. So.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, but yeah, more, more hands on deck just takes a little bit more strain off of our department, although you're, are correct, there are still costs associated with this.
So what are the costs that you see in addition if, because I, I didn't know you weren't aware that the sheriff was doing the mowing, having inmates do that? What are the additional costs? Because I think they also pay for the water at that park, too, the sprinkler system?
Yeah, we never had, in part of the original agreement, we never turned on the water. It was just for minimal maintenance.
So what are the additional costs if sheriff is able to do the mowing that you're thinking this is supposed to cover?
Well, the additional costs are in the original packet, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
But you said you didn't know that the sheriff was going to be doing mowing?
That's correct, because it was really between me, Fairgrounds, and sheriff, and the only one who came up with a bid for this was me. So that's where we're at.
So I know that we still have the ADA accessible portable toilet-
That's correct.
-that needs to be funded. You guys are still correct, going to be doing trash pickup and trash removal from the site? And then if there, I don't know, are there any other utility costs associated with those activities?
Yeah, and I also, I haven't talked with the sheriff's work crew yet, so I don't know exactly what their availability is. And so originally, when this was written and previously approved, I was the only one who was willing to step up to mow, uh, for this amount. And I know Mark from Fairgrounds, happy to take care of the park, um, just a matter of figuring out how to allot the money. And then with the sheriff stepping in, I don't know what his work schedule is, I don't know what his work crew's schedule is. And so if they're unavailable, have to miss a week, they have to change assignments, we are still covered with taking care of this park with this that was already previously approved. We're just signing the resolution today.
And is the water turned on now, or is it going to be turned on, or?
I, I don't know about the water, because that was never part of this-
The sprinklers were on over there.
Yeah.
They were?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming sheriff is paying the water bill, because-
Sheriff was, his office was always, the water's always been coming out of sheriff's item for that particular park. So.
And, and I, and I don't know about, I don't know about the sprinklers. This was just a proposal for minimal maintenance.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution number 2025 dash thirty-nine, ordering the clerk, the clerk, excuse me, to increase lines zero three zero dash seven thousand by $400, zero three zero dash sixty-nine fifty-five by $300, zero three zero dash sixty-seven twenty by $600, and zero three zero dash seventy-eight sixty by $400 from the contingency funding.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Wayne Martin?
Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident, still. I would hope or request that, because the director has not talked to the sheriff's department, finding out what coverage they are going, the sheriff is going to provide and all, that there is a potential change in the money that is given to the Parks and Waterways, especially if the sheriff's department is, is incurring that cost in their, in there or out of their budget to do that. So that, that, you know, it, it's proper amount of money being spent where it should be, and not just increasing a budget, uh, where there's extra money that ends up in his, his account. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, any further deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Director Howard?
Commendo commissioners, Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste, for the record. Solid Waste is requesting to out, reallocate $500,000 from line item zero two three nine four seven zero capital land improvements to zero two three nine three seven zero capital other. During the budgeting for this fiscal year, Solid Waste was instructed by engineering, the, the asphalt in front of the coal burn tipping floor may need to be replaced. And this was included in the budget. The contractor that installed the, the asphalt made the repairs, which did not require the asphalt replacement. Solid Waste would like to use these funds for other capital purchases and improvements that we, we have needs for. For example, point-of-sale system, vehicle repairs, fencing repairs, um, rubber, rubber curtains for the, for the tipping floor. Any expenditures, of course, would be, from this would be approved by the board. A little history on the asphalt. When it was first installed, when we opened, it was hot weather. So with the heavy trucks and equipment, the asphalt actually compacted lower than what the asphalt company compacted the asphalt. So when it met the concrete apron, it left a, an uneven ledge. So after the budget was approved, the contractor went in and made those repairs, added asphalt and reinforced the asphalt. So as of today, the asphalt is holding up well and it does not need to be replaced.
All right. Any questions from the board before we entertain a motion?
Director, I think you're aware, I've been emailing back and forth with Melissa, so I'm trying to better understand the history of the apron area.
Yes.
So if I, if I'm reading the emails correctly, it sounds like the, since the, since that apron on the tipping floor is a high-use, um, high-abuse area-
Yeah.
-we understand that asphalt's going to have a much shorter lifespan than a concrete apron would have. I think engineering is estimating somewhere from three to five years as a life expectancy. If I also, if I get this right, it looks like they're saying $110,000 for a 10-foot-wide concrete apron would be the estimated cost. Is that, is that the same area that was contemplated previously, or is this a?
I was-
I'm just trying to understand the scope.
I was given the 500,000 by engineering for, I don't remember the area for the concrete apron.
Okay. So that may have been a larger area-
Larger area.
-what county engineering is saying. So my, my, my question and consideration is if, if that area of asphalt is currently functioning well, which is great, but we think it's going to only have a three to five-year life expectancy, then should we hold some amount in reserve still as a, in a capital fund to be able to provide that replacement of that 10-foot section with concrete in the future, so that we're not running into an ongoing cost, you know, before return on investment? And just, what I don't want to do is expend all the funds and then have a significant repair cost show up in a few years-
Understand.
...that we can, you know, pay for. And that's the piece that I'm trying to get my head wrapped around.
And in my conversation with engineering, as long as we maintain the crack seals, we, we chip seal it and keep it maintained and keep, and armor that surface, we could probably, we have a longer, um, life than three to four years, as long as it's well-maintained, if that makes sense.
If the wear and surface is maintained.
Correct, yes.
You know, if they put down a heavier base- You know, if they put down a heavier base, heavier gravel base on that?
They did.
To handle the loading?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it was, it was hot weather, I guess when we opened, it was hot weather and it's fresh asphalt. So all the heavy equipment, the loaders, the loaded trucks and things, just compacted the asphalt down further than what the roller did from the asphalt company.
I don't have anything for...
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number 202540, the reallocation of $500,000 from line 023-9470, capital land improvements, to line item 023-9370, capital other.
Seconded for discussion.
There's a motion and a second. Comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board?
I, I appreciate the additional information from the director. I still just have a general concern that asphalt's not the right product for the location just because it's not going to hold up as well over time. And so we have a viable solution that's in place right now, but I think we need to be anticipating that it's going to not have a long lifespan. So I would, I would like to see a portion of the funds held in reserve for the future capital project to be able to replace the asphalt apron with concrete when it reaches the end of its useful life. And so I'm, I'm okay with freeing up some of those funds to do other necessary maintenance that has been identified, but I still, I still think we, we have a less than perfect solution that was implemented originally with the project, and I'd like to be planning for what it's going to take to resolve that when it reaches the end of its useful life. And so I asked some questions of solid waste, and they, and they got engineering involved to offer some feedback on it. And that was where Spencer Ferguson had indicated that he anticipated if we were to replace a 10-foot width of apron, so that I guess that would be sort of the primary loading area, if you would, on the tipping floor, that he was estimating around $110,000 for that reduced scope of size. So I would like to see us hold at least that $110,000 in a capital account for the replacement of that small apron area in the future as it degrades because of the amount of loading and daily use that it gets. And/or even if that's used to, to be able to afford to do the chip seals and keep the wearing surface to try to maintain that asset as long as we can and extend its useful life. I'm just concerned that it wasn't the best product at the time that it was installed, and now we're going to have an ongoing maintenance cost associated with it. And so I'd like to see us plan for that and still be able to free up other unused funds for other maintenance needs that Solid Waste has, but I just, I have a concern about not having funding in place right now to address something that we already know is going to be an ongoing costly maintenance item.
I don't disagree. I'm not actually comfortable giving access to any of the funds, mostly because Culver has a lot of stuff that we have seen just in this year that has failed. I think we need to have a broader plan before we allocate money. I understand this says that you would ask for board approval on each expenditure. When we talked in budget time, I had made the suggestion of just putting the money in a capital improvement account, collect interest on it, but then I think we need to really look at what are the, the things that weren't done as good as they could have been out there and do an account specifically to address it, because that's what those funds were allocated for, and then address that. I don't want to, I'm not really comfortable pulling the money out, and I don't know that I would leave it at just the $100,000, because that's one item. We've had quite a bit go wrong, and that's not a very, that's a new site with new improvements. And so I would like to see kind of a bigger plan of that particular site and then come with a figure that says this is a reasonable amount to hold out for the known repairs that this site is going to need, and then say, what is your leftover to apply to something else? I don't feel like this has come forward with that plan on Culver. We've had a lot happen out there since that has opened up, and I think that working with Spencer to kind of look at what was done, what is the kind of life expectancy of some of the things that were implemented, and kind of doing a real plan to even include, I still hate that gearbox, to include those things of, you know, if this fails, what would this cost us, and when would we have to replace that? So you have that in terms of available funds to address that site, because that's completely different than the other sites. I think I'd like to see that. I just don't, I understand that it was just that dollar amount was slated for something that you no longer need, but I don't feel that it means that Culver doesn't need that money still in some way. I would just like to see a little bit more detail on what that site needs. For sure.
So you're referring to like our grizzly issues and things like that?
Yeah, well, and, and like Commissioner Donkey said, that the way, the flooring that we put in there was not ideal flooring. And as we look at the costs that have gone up, even with road and bridge discussions on how increased nitrochloride has gone, by the time we have to do some of those repairs, we might have inflated costs. We don't know that. But when you need to repair it, we'll need to repair it, and where's that money going to come from? We slated this $500,000 for that site repair. And so I think we need to be a little bit more detailed on what's out there that could go wrong, what's the expectancy of some of those items, those are larger trucks, those are, we haven't gone through a heavy snow out there to see what, how that floor will be impacted. I just don't feel like it's the right thing to pull that money out and start spending it on something else.
So by moving it into this capital other line, it can't be spent unless it comes to the board, correct? I mean, we can't just go buy a POS system.
He can spend out of that, it's just he's saying that he will bring it forward, but it's just like, it's one of those things, you have to watch it versus putting it in that. The thing about that capital improvement account is it's slated for projects that require that money to be pulled out for projects, which is why, that's why I mentioned that type of account. Other is generic, so it just means in terms of finance, anything that is other, that could be spent. It's just more of a discussion that he says he'd bring it forward, which means if there was a deficiency in another line, they could pull it out of that other line and pay that deficiency. And I think the consensus majority opinion on this board is that money needs to be slated for that site, not other. Other is too generic, and I think that's partly when we're looking at the budget, that we're trying to move away from things that say other miscellaneous. When we're talking about capital improvement, that's a very specific type of account for a specific purpose. Other is very generic, it just means extra money in your budget that is not earmarked for something that can be, can go anywhere, which means it could be gone by the time you need it because it's not managed at that, at a tight level.
Yeah. I think the director's intent of identifying needs and allocating funds for those needs, those maintenance items, improvements, makes sense, but I think we just need to do a broader consideration for some of these other high-dollar items that we think we have a pretty good level of information to anticipate having a future cost in the next few years. And so I think if we could better evaluate and create line items where we're budgeting for that specifically, then we'll know what additional funds we have that could help to support some of these other maintenance needs, but, yeah.
And we've created line item for the grizzly for the funds that we need for the future, so we have our prices for the parts and things like that.
Yeah, based on those budget contributions.
Yes, so we've always created those line items for those projects. And then we have a list of projects that, you know, in priority for, if we were to move forward with this.
Is it possible to take a look at what we've said and bring back kind of an overview of Culver's site?
Sure, absolutely.
And then kind of some, maybe a closer concrete kind of idea of some numbers of what could happen at Culver, and then asking for the money to be moved that is extra from after you've kind of done that little bit deeper dive, and then we could look at moving it into a different account to allocate for some of the things that you brought forward here, but then making sure there's a safety net for that site as a whole?
Absolutely.
Does that sound reasonable to the board?
So you're talking about including like US system and the fencing repairs, stuff that, at Culver itself?
Right, correct.
Yeah, but, but having that safety net for things failing, because that would have been a huge cost with that box if we would have had to pay. And thankfully, we were able to reach an agreement, and they came in and they made some adjustments, but by the time we hit September, we are outside of all windows of warranties out there. And as I said, that's as soon as those things will start failing, as soon as the warranty is out, so does that work?
Absolutely.
Does the board agree with that?
So we want to keep it in the account that it's in now?
We're not moving, so the decision is to, he'll bring this back essentially another week, and then kind of itemize what are the possible repair needs out at Culver and what extra money, and then we'll look at what's, after we've taken a deeper look at Culver.
Yes, I would suggest voting this one down today, and then we'll have a new proposal to consider.
So just a generic question, is there a line item, or is there a certain account that we can move some of these funds into that would bear interest?
That's why, that was the capital improvement account, so that's why I also don't want to do the other. You could, we also had the discussion, like I'm trying to deal with road and bridge is inside that sweep account, the interest that's collected on something like that for earmarked for a project, but we're, that's not what he brought forward on this one. And so we were going to look at that for specific projects that he has in solid waste so that we can start saving for those projects. The benefit of capital improve, I see your hand, you're just like a little, what do you want to say? The capital improvement account is very specific that, so you don't have to keep bouncing it year after year.
We just put it here as instructed by, in that line item, so.
It will be in the sweep account. It's still gaining interest. It's just a matter of spending authority.
The interest goes to the general fund, though, and in order to get the interest into, to give the interest to the person whose money that is, the general fund has to come through and do a vote to say, give them back that interest. And since we're not earmarked for saying the $500,000 in that sweep account is earmarked for them, the interest is going into the net pot.
That is your bill's choice.
So I'm trying to clean that so we can allocate, so they can start collecting to move their projects forward.
I just want you to know that there is interest.
I know it's in the sweep. All right. Okay, are we ready? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Donkey?
No.
No?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Sheriff Swift Grant, close out.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public, and members of the community on the record. The item, according to the board, is as far as requested, of course, in time of fiscal year 25, Waterways Improvement Fund grant.
You understand that, or is it just me?
I can, but it's challenging. Excuse me, could you please try to move closer to the microphone?
Something isn't sounding right.
It's very muffled and distant sounding. Still very difficult.
Do you mind if I read your, your document? Because I, it's hard to understand what you're saying.
That'd be perfect, thank you.
All right. So regarding FY25 WIF grant closeout, the Bonner County Sheriff's Office was awarded a Waterways Improvement Fund grant for FY25 to repower a sheriff patrol vessel. The scope of work has been completed, and the grant can be closed. The grant closeout form requires the signature of the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners prior to submitting for reimbursement. Auditing and legal have reviewed, reviewed and approved this item. Does the board have any questions regarding closing out the WIF? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the chair to sign and submit the WIF grant closeout form.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this? All right, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Sorry we couldn't hear you.
Thank you, hope it's better now.
All right, Assessor Inglehart.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public. I have one thing for you this morning, it's authorization to sign an Estoppel certificate. Considering the recent sale of the Bonner Mall and our tendency there, we have been asked to sign an Estoppel certificate. The Estoppel certificate reiterates the current terms and conditions of our lease and will be delivered to the new landowner slash buyer. It also establishes that neither party is indebted to the other beyond our current agreement for rent. It has been approved by audit, risk, and legal, and I do want to make a correction on the suggested motion. It should read, based on the information before us, I move that the assessor be authorized to sign the Estoppel certificate related to the Bonner Mall leased office space.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Assessor Inglehart?
So I just want to double check, I know you've already said that it's based on the current terms, but because it includes lease rate adjustments, I just wanted to be sure that those are the lease rate adjustments that you've already agreed to.
Right, yeah, the original agreement goes back to when, yeah, Razor, Cornell Razor was, I think he signed it originally. It expires in '27, but we're basically agreeing to the current terms and conditions.
Great.
We should have courtesy to this new owner, they're asking for it, that's part of their agreement. Probably not like absolutely, we're not obligated under our lease to do it, but we're doing it as a partner with them because we've been long-term cooperative.
Commissioner Corn? No, all right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that the assessor be authorized to sign the Estoppel certificate related to Bonner Mall leased office space.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, our next item is from Mayor Connolly of Priest River. We had some discussions at Bonner Park West, and so in order to have full transparency, we want to make sure our community has all the information about what is available there. So you can go wherever you want. Up there might be easier.
Definitely, I don't know about you.
I put him on this agenda. I invited him.
Yes, you did. Good morning, Commissioners and the public. I'm here to try to clarify some of the issues that were brought forth, I think, questions about if the park was to go to Priest River and how it would be used and different things like that. We currently have 38 acres that adjoins the Bonner Park West. It is being looked at first, building it out as a park, with a portion of it being left treed, vegetated, and wetlands. So we, what we want to do is try to incorporate Bonner Park West into that whole project. We feel like it would be a better use for that property. I think that as we move forward, we're seeing, you know, everybody's struggling to maintain their parks, whether it's cities, whether it's counties, wherever it is. I was in Boise last week, it came up multiple times. There's just not enough money to go around to properly maintain these. So we've looked towards partnering with a marine division of Stan Craft to build and maintain and operate a marina, an RV park on the 38 acres. So these are some of the things that we're working towards. We have met with the public extensively, five times over the last two years, two and a half years, to try to come up with a master plan that would show what everybody, not everybody, what pretty much everybody would like to see of that 38 acres. And so then that's what we're trying to incorporate as of now through a partnership with Stan Craft. And I think it would be a great fit to consolidate those two parks to try to make it a more usable feature down there. But we're here to answer questions. I've got Jim Martin, who is the former mayor, who also is the project manager that's here. He's really been involved in it more so than myself because it is time-consuming. We've got Nelson Erickson from Stan Craft here. He has a little presentation, if you'd like to see some of the drawings of what they're proposing. But just basically, if there's questions, I mean, Asia said, hey, there was a couple questions about launching and cost of launching, and Bonner County Sheriff said, well, we'd like to have a spot to park a sheriff's boat. Both of those questions have been answered by Stan... Both of those questions have been answered by Stan Craft if they move forward. Now, this hasn't been approved by council. It's been, it's been, let's put it this way, keep going, moving forward. And we want to see what the final plan looks like and how that will work for. And it will be leased from the city to the.
And part of our discussion was, as Priest River was hearing the Bonner County talk about Bonner Park West is, what, what makes the most sense for the people? And to put, since they were working on this idea for more than two years and we had just talked about it, I think over the last few months of what do we do with Bonner Park West? When I went and visited with Mayor Connolly, they've actually done a whole build out of what it would look like if it was included or if it wasn't included in it because it's just this little outcropping on that edge and what would serve the public the most, which is the ultimate goal. Knowing that people in Bonner County that came to our meetings had issues with Bonner County giving up waterfront property as well, because I did explain that too. But it's also from my view important that, and, and I think in agreement with Mayor Connolly that the community understand what the available options are so that when we're making a decision about what to do, it was this was available and this is what we chose. But everybody knew what the options were because they're, you guys, did you guys bring that big picture? The picture that you have? That what they, what they have down there, it feels weird to be in the county and not have seen it, but they've been working on it for a long time. And so when I saw what their suggestion was, if you remove the question of who owns what, but you look at what they're trying to build out for the community, one of the things that's different about it is, that is a hard discussion that I think the county has to have is their recommendation, when I saw it, and you tell me if you guys changed it since we last talked, was the area that is Bonner Park West where there's that swimming area would actually shift to have a better swimming area for the public. That was one of the changes. And their recommendation was not that the swimming area would ever close to where people wouldn't have access to it, but that it would shift into a different area within that 38 acres that's down there as they're looking to develop it. And that, I think that that bears our county actually looking at what is our role? Because I know that from the side that is Bonner County West, when we talked, it was if they were going to have, they were willing to put a marine, a covered sheriff's, what do you call that thingy?
A parking spot.
Parking spot for the sheriff, because that was one of the questions that was asked so that he had access down there and just shifting. So what, and if I remember, and you correct me if I say it wrong, that there was not going to be a charge to Bonner County residents, but a charge to out of state residents to park there, which there's no revenue coming in for that parking. And that was going to be a way to help address the influx of people into the parks of North Idaho, but also helping to supplement the cost of the park itself. So I wanted to make sure we all understood, and you guys shift back and forth, but I want to make sure the whole county has an opportunity to hear what they're working on because before we were just talking about, do we just gift it? But when you go down there and you see what they're actually working on, it's, it's a way bigger plan and it's not a tomorrow thing. It's a 10-year plan that they're trying to build out for the community. And it's an opportunity to look at what our options are as the county. Cause it is prime real estate that we have down there and it is the only waterfront. And there's, in my mind, I'm like, well, why don't we just charge you guys to rent for our property? So there's options, but I think we have to have that discussion. So do you want to give part of a presentation?
Well, you just took it all away. I left a little bit for him, but.
No, he brought out the papers. I want everybody to understand, because I know there are some people that are, we don't want to give away any land in Bonner County. But I want us to be open minded of what everyone's here to hear about is what the project has, what the whole project is so that we make a good decision as the board. Cause the community wants us to make a decision on this board and we have to address whether or not we're going to have a camp post down there or not, or what that park is going to be. Cause it is difficult for the county to maintain that park.
Yeah, and I agree with all of those things. And you did a great job of explaining exactly what Nelson was going to talk about. But no, it's, it's cool.
That shows that I listened to you.
You did.
I didn't ignore you.
I'm impressed. That was, that was nearly word for word. And I would, I'll clarify a little bit more. The discussion that Nelson and I had about launch would be Bonner County residents, not necessarily out of state, just Bonner County residents have the right to launch for free. Maybe it could be expanded to Idaho residents. That kind of would be, the objective is probably to try to get this leased. Now, we don't have that done. So this is all pre, you know, this is just ideas and, and we're trying to come up with this to add to it. We're moving forward regardless with or without it. But condensing the two and using that ground, that's the swim beach now as more part of the marina because it fits better, because there's a conflict between launch and swim beach, or there tends to be because people don't always follow the rules and stay on the inside of the docks. So it just, it's, it's a better plan to move it down. It's probably going to be moved down, oh, I'm going to say 800 feet where it's a better spot for it. It's more of a, a less high bank. It'll be built for swim and it would be away from that whole thing. But, you know, I mean, I'm open to questions, but Nelson's got a, I don't know. You can probably pick one that you like and plug it in and, and give a little bit of a brief on what the company is about and things like that. But that could be beyond what you guys really want to see. I don't know. You choose, oh, Jim wants to speak.
You can grab that microphone too.
Just jump right up there.
So one of the things, as the project manager on this is working with the city and working with Stan Craft and trying to bring everybody together and all the other federal agencies that have to approve this thing. But one of the things that we're looking at is we're starting to get into some design features. And do we include that in the overall design? Do we add it, you know, down here? Or is it something that the county wants to hold on to? So we change, we need to understand that so we can design it differently. And so we're starting to get into those discussions as far as design, build, the lease, all that stuff. And so it's like, how does that fit? And so that's, that's really, either way is, it, it works, but we just need to know, should we include it or not?
Yeah.
So.
I can completely understand that from a planning perspective, planning and design. And I, so I, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think this is a beautiful vision. I think for the residents of Priest River and the county as a whole, the things that the mayor's been bringing up are probably the most paramount when it comes to how much of this is pay to play? And what is that impact on the, on the residents of the county and of the city, of course, but for us of the county? And then we, you know, our parks and director has brought forward information I wasn't aware of that he recently brought up, which was, I believe there's a grant that was associated with the current dock. And there are obligations the county has associated with that on one side from a legal perspective. We have feedback from the county residents about, and I, I appreciate and agree with them that it's, it would be concerning for the county to give up an asset, a resource, you know, public access to the water. And there, there could be things that would help to ensure future public access. But that's understandably very important to the citizens of the county that I want to be sure that we're thoughtfully championing. And so I realize it's more complicated than your current considerations, but one of the things I'd be really interested in and understanding is, would there be a way for the county to partner as a part of this consideration of a project? So that the county's not actually giving up public access to waterfront, but partnering in the bigger vision to help create something that ultimately is a resource for the residents of the county? That is better than what it is today, but that we can actually have a seat at the table to help ensure that we're doing our part to make sure that we're maintaining free public access of our residents to this resource, things of that nature. Because if we're, if we have a seat at the table and we're one of the players, then we have some direct oversight and we're not just then relying on others to make those decisions if we were to gift that or do something like that. So I think trying to figure out maybe there's a balanced approach that we could find a way to make what the county has better for, for our residents of the county, but also try to be a partner to make something, not just the county's property, but this entire area as you have of it. Cause I've seen this vision for the first time, I can see why this could be an amazing resource for our community as a whole. But I want to figure out how as a county, we can responsibly potentially participate in that.
I'm not on a mic right now. I just want, hopefully you guys, this picks up. There's like four of them all around me. It hadn't occurred to me, I, this is all news to me as well. By the way, this is Bill Wilson for the record. Couple of thoughts on how the county and maybe try to accommodate interest for both parties. Obviously the certainty of knowing whether or not the county can provide the property at the early stage for planning purposes is important. But then also preserving the interest in the property that you'd be critical. One option for that could be that if when we do a, a land transfer, we can do in the deed a right of reversion upon a certain contingency. So you could say, we've seen this before in other pieces of property where we say, shall be used for the following purposes, and if not, then therefore it will revert back to the grant to work. So you might say something in there to the effect of like, you know, this property shall be used for public access to the water in, you know, we can, we can craft the language that makes you satisfied with the preservation of that interest. And if not, then reverts back to Bonner County. Cause maybe then that could give you guys the certainty of knowing, we're going to have this property so long as we provide this certain access that we agree on. And then you board can say, we're accounting for the interests that people have told us are important to them, but we're also giving these guys the certainty of knowing what they can do moving forward. So we could probably try to craft a solution in the deed that could account for these concerns. I'm just throwing it out there. This is the first ever, so it's not helpful.
It is helpful, because that's part of what we wanted was a conversation about it. So I'm going to throw out a different one, which I don't think I mentioned to you. So is there an option that exists? Cause if I'm a taxpayer, one of my questions is, prime real estate giveaway means I didn't get money for it. So there's a way for the county to be, like leasing land for the project that says the project's going to be used for this, but it's leased. And so an amount of rent would be paid to the county for its prime real estate with the same kind of, we'll continue that agreement so long as the public has access as an option. Cause I, I'm trying to look at all aspects of what community has to say about things. And when you're looking at waterfront real estate, if we were to put in a marina there where people are going to pay to launch their boats, there, that's money, that's, that's an investment. So is that something that you guys have thought about?
Not really. No, but I don't think anything's really on or off the table. We just needed to, you know, this was a, a discussion that we were having as far as, is this going to be, you know, should we include this in the planning stages or not? And, and I think that, and again, I don't speak for the city. I'm kind of like the intermediary, which is, is perfect. So I say stuff and then the mayor yells at me for saying it. But I don't think.
He makes fun of me too, so we're even.
The, the option of having a, the commissioners or the county having a seat at the table as we go through the planning process and, and showing you guys kind of what Stan Craft is looking at doing in, in the overall picture. I think as they go to present to the city council to get the lease, as we move forward with the lease and the, the design, that needs to be done kind of like for, they need to be, they want to make sure that they've got an agreement with the city that says, if we go to all this work and we show you all of our plans, you're not going to steal them and go give it to somebody else. But we're actually going to work with them.
Yeah.
Which is, Stan Craft is a great partner for the city. But I think as we move forward, I think that those are definitely, I would be happy to come back up here and present to you guys with the mayor as we move forward with this.
Yeah, and I can weigh in just a little bit more on what Bill said. Why that's a perfect, it happens all the time and it's, and it's, it's an ironclad thing. It's like, wait a minute, you know, we're not going to run off and sell it. Number one, it's under land trust and I think Matt knows that. He met with the same girls that I met with and we talked about, this has to be public property forever. So it, it can't go away. And that's part of the, part of the gist of this whole thing is, what's the best utilization for this? I don't know that right now, I would say it's not being utilized to its proper status. It could be much better. Does that mean the county could do it? Well, I don't see that as not taking it off the table. I just, we hadn't really considered that because it seemed like at the time when I first talked to you, it's like, hey, it'd probably be better off in your hands. You're right there. Why don't you guys give it a whirl? And we said, okay, we would do that. But all of those things that have been mentioned about keeping the property public, that's, that's not, that's not even an issue because it's, it has to be by law. So, and when we met, it's like the, the docks and stuff were a grant through a different, it's not the land grant, but everything on shore has to be kept pretty much the same, which means hopefully improved, but you know what I mean? Just do some overdue maintenance. There's some, there's some pretty heavy costs associated with some of the things like the, the ramp, the parking areas falling apart, the bathrooms are under maintained and probably need some work. I don't know, you can weigh in on that if you wish, Matt. But I mean, when I was here, it was, it was an issue sadly enough.
And I think when you, if you guys, and maybe there, it's worth another conversation. If you look at the blown up image that they have of this image, because you guys have a big poster on the wall, it lets you see where that shift, have you seen it? It lets you see where the shift would be that if you forget who owns what, it creates actually a complex for the community. Because it's not just a matter of the swim beach and the, the station for docking your boat or whatever you call that. It has fields in that has the school being able to be integrated into that area. And it creates a different type of community down there. When I hear comments from the community, it's waterfront property that's valuable. How do we maintain that access? And the grant essentially, the way that grant is written, I've seen that Mayor Connolly showed it to me. It's, it's, it is exactly what he said. There's no option to not maintain that as public property. It has to maintain public property. And so in some ways, what Bill said isn't even necessary because there's no option for us not to keep it that way because that's what the land was gifted for. And the idea that I think we be part of the conversation, I think it's important because that's a huge project. And I think so long as we're paying attention to the interests of the county and the county residents and what they're looking for, I think there might be opportunity to collaborate on this with the city of Priest River. The city of Priest River, if I remember, you guys don't have the ability or desire to be able to pay for this ongoing park maintenance. That's kind of what this is. It's a shift to a third party company that's essentially going to maintain this complex, if you will, in that area, which is inclusive of the maintenance of the park aspect of it there.
Commissioner, one thing I would mention on that is before we ingest funding into this project, right? Then to not have a corridor piece like what this is, the kind of property is, you get beautification and then you get what is underfunded, you know? So it just is a disconnect in the property in general, not to mention maintenance going down the line. Our plan would be to maintain the entire property to the level that we maintain things. And so when it's, you have a, a signature piece, the direct beginning of the entire thing, the corridor of it not being maintained to that level. I mean, our home would be as works of the mountain, you know? That's launch ramp, that's docks, that's infrastructure, that's bathroom facilities, that's the entire piece, you know?
So what is your estimated cost to build this to start with?
The, the entire thing, the engineer's estimate was like, it was close to $20 million. But that was because the ball, the fields in the center, they were working with turf and different stuff. And that was like a $9 million build out. That's, so it's engineer's estimates. But it, it's in the, the master plan document is actually on the city of Priest River's website. So you can go on and that's where this came from. And it kind of talks through all those different components as well. But I don't know, but you know, it's kind of like what we, we just had a meeting last week and there was, I don't know, there was eight individuals from nine or 10 different state and federal agencies and tribal. And we're kind of moving from concept to reality at this point. We've done some work down there. We had to go in and remove some diseased trees, different things. And then we did a fuels reduction through the county. The county, it was a project with the county that we worked on with them. They came over and did a bunch of fuels reduction, kind of cleaned it up. So now you. So now you can actually walk through it if the trees aren't, you know? So we opened it up to the public so they can actually start using it. So from there, that's when we're kind of working with Stan Craft on what, what is that going to look like? What is that project, you know? And, and I think, you know, Commissioner Williams was right. The, I think the city all along, I mean, I've, I've been working on this property probably trying to fire it up for 20 years for the city. So it finally happened in 2021. But it was all, we always knew that you get grants to build it, you can't get grants to maintain it. And so whatever we had, we knew that we had to have, you know, something, the marina, the RV park to generate revenue to help do it. Now with Stan Craft and their participation, possible participation, it's the best of both worlds for both the city and the county if we can get those two pieces of property together. Whether the county, you know, however we want to work that through the revision clause or, I think we had, I think it was another project that the county and the city worked on with revision clause in it as well years ago. So I think that it's something that we could probably definitely, I feel we could work it out.
Do you have an estimated maintenance cost on an annual basis?
You know, I don't think we've got to that point yet, just based on what's going to be there. I don't, yeah, we haven't really got to that point. It, Commissioner Corley, it came very quick. You know, we were going to just do, we were working on bank stabilization. And I don't know if you've ever done a bank stabilization project, but there's 3,600 linear feet around this that we're trying to not lose, continue to lose to that. So that's where, that was my only project for this, this year, was to try to get that permit and get that started. It's taken way longer because of all the federal stuff with it. And then we, the county, or somebody approached us about doing the bonfire, the fuels reduction project. So we got that. We were able to get some of that done. And then Stan Craft approaches. So it's kind of like everything's coming very quick. So we haven't really got to that point. But yeah, that's, that's kind of the next phase, but we need, we wanted to start working on design. So that's kind of what we're, so we'll probably maybe look at a design for the park, Bonner Park West being included and one without, just very generic to start with and that we can show you guys, you know, here shortly. But if you guys are open to the idea, whether that's transferring the property to the city with a reversion or some way, if it's, if you guys are open, I think that we're going to go that direction and start designing that way.
Can we open up for public questions to see if the public asks questions? All right.
I'll make one more statement real quickly. Is when you said something about, well, you know, if there's money to be made, we should be looking at that for the county. The city just would like to break even. I think that this is such a great opportunity that you just don't get opportunities like this. So what we want to do is just break even. So if we did make a little extra money, it would go back towards the park and making it even better. It's not, it's not a general fund budget type of thing. Oh, hey, we can, we can make a little extra money so we can get a new police car. I did that for you. We tend to just think about, hey, if there's a few bucks, it's going to take such a monumental investment. We're not sure even how that looks yet. We haven't been approached in that.
Thank you for saying that. I just want to make sure we say all the things that everyone here has commented to us about.
Sure.
So that we can have an answer to that. Because that's part of people having a buy-in on a project and supporting, you know, kind of the decision and getting an answer. So Wayne Martin is the only one that wants to talk in today's meeting.
And he always does. Hey, Wayne.
Wayne.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Wayne Martin for the record, Bonner County resident. First thing, people that are speaking, they're not at the mic, no names or where they're from. So it is difficult to hear when you're on Zoom. I do think that this is a potential benefit to the county to improve that waterfront area. We have been with friends that have launched boats from there. So anything that would benefit that aspect would be really nice. A question I have on the sheriff marine unit that, would there be a cost to the sheriff or the county for a dock space? Whether it's renting, whether, you know, however that would, would go about? Because that is something that is a concern, but is needed down that direction. And what would this, if the county agreed to this and went with it, what would this do with the grant that Parks and Waterways is looking or has received? And could the grant money be returned if it was, you know, goes in that direction? That's pretty much what I have right now. Thank you.
I'll let the mayor answer your question about the sheriff.
Yeah, so the company has stated that they would at no cost build this and allow the sheriff to park their boat there, which we think is a benefit to the area. Also, Wayne, it's just like, you know, if you had a boat there and if the officer just had to drive there and get in it, it seems like we'd have better coverage on that end of the, on the river. So, yeah, they were.
But it was no cost to the sheriff to build the covered parking and they would have no cost to dock the boat there?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That, that is important. And like you said, Mayor Connolly, being able to have a marine officer show up quickly to man the boat or being out there, appreciate it.
All right.
So on the grant thing, I don't know, have you guys submitted a grant for Bonner Park?
Not for Bonner Park West.
Oh, okay.
No. I think, I think, sorry, Wayne, I think you're referencing that, that there has been, he made the comment about grant money related to the docks. We're talking about the, the land itself. So there's no reversion of anything related to a grant if there was going to be any type of agreement.
It seemed acceptable to do something different down there. It's something you'd have to work through regardless it was Bonner County or the City of Priest River.
Fred Arndt.
And still a Bonner County resident. I, I have heard this before. You know my background. I would hope that you all would come from the point of losing waterfront property is unacceptable to the taxpayers of Bonner County. And whatever promises are made, that they be poured in concrete so that it's to the benefit of the taxpayers of this county. I can tell you that Camp Bay was given away under the guise it was in the best interest of the people. I charted out the numbers on that. They were talking about maintenance on the road and snow plowing. They gave away Camp Bay. The total benefit to the individual taxpayers of Bonner County was less than 12 cents a year. So I really hope that you negotiate hard.
And so part of what we're doing that hopefully you see is different is we're having the open discussion about what's on the table so that everybody's involved in a transparent way. And so that is a change.
And I, I heard a similar process with Camp Bay. Just remember.
Understood, understood. Any other public comment on this item?
Or I'd like to speak about it. I'm the public, I guess. I have concerns. As the people have seen recently, in the last couple of years, our public lands are disappearing. And I hear that they're not going to disappear. I understand that. But what does happen and what can happen is, City Beach is a prime example here in City of Sandpoint where the people have been able to use it free of charge for all these years. And then something changes, new administration comes in, whatever the deal is, and now they want to charge for parking. Something that the taxpayers paid for, that they've been enjoying and using free of charge for many years, is now going to be a play. And what that does is it runs the locals out and the people from Washington, they don't mind paying five or $10 to park. They're used to that. The locals are not used to that. So that's an example there. Another example is Travers Park, you know, that was donated with land stipulations at the city. And I'm talking about city, but county is really no different than the city when it comes to things like this. Because what I foresee down the future is this all looks well and great. The estimated cost is $20 million. If that can be paid for in grants, that's great, but that's really still yours and my money. Maintenance, we have no idea what the maintenance is going to be on it. It's going to be atrocious, I'm sure. And the plan is to pay for that with parking or launch fees or whatever. That is going to be where the people of Bonner County right now are using this park at no charge. It might not look like this, but I can still launch my boat there. So I have concerns as well as others do because of what history has shown us in the past is something is presented all well and great, and then things change 10 years down the road. So I would be very careful looking at this. I personally, right now, I don't think I support this, but it's in the concept stage. I understand that. There's a lot of things to be discussed and talked about. But I would not want to do something or make a decision on something that 10 years down the road now financially curbs the Bonner County citizens from enjoying their property.
And I think that's valid. Both those points are valid. And I'm sitting in the same seat. What I don't want to do is put something in that is going to eliminate the use of the locals. I mean, this is, this is what we're trying to do is build something pretty special or really special for the locals to enjoy. Sure, you're going to have to share it and there's going to be fees associated, but we're going to keep the majority of the center of the park. There's commercial areas like the marina and like an RV park that's, if you can look at the map, that are going to support and pay for the maintenance of it. The City of Priest River cannot take on the maintenance of something of this size. It would, it would bankrupt the City of Priest River. So trust me, Ron, I'm watching everything that's happened on in Sandpoint, in other places. Coraline's facing the same thing with some of their big parks. They are having trouble maintaining them at the level that they want. And, and it's, it's all valid and we are, we're on it. And we've got a partner, hopefully, if the council adopts that, that has that experience, that already is doing that in other places that can, that can work with us to make sure that we can get all those things, but still do exactly what you just explained. So.
I think that we have a, I think as a county, the people have a little bit of trepidation because of feeling like things didn't, they didn't have the relationships and the outcomes that they thought they had at negotiation. But I don't think that we should say because some other board did something that wasn't desirable, that, I think we have been a transparent, open board, which is the point of this conversation to say, this is what the option is. This is an opportunity to collaborate. Putting each, each respective group, my job is to put the county first. Mayor Connolly is supposed to put the city first. Stan Craft is going to put Stan Craft first and you all come to the table. And in part, this is having not just those parties there, but the public to see the conversation openly and give input. I don't want to say I'm closed to an idea and I don't want to say I agree to an idea. I don't want to not be at the table for an idea that could benefit each different individual in such a way that enhances that area because of not liking the outcome of Camp Bay. Knowing that the interests of the county is what I'm supposed to be paying attention to. And I think we're all saying the same thing. The question is, is there an opportunity for the county to have a seat at the table? Which I feel like I'm hearing there is an opportunity for us to be part of the conversation. I think the community has to hold us responsible for doing exactly what you're seeing here is bringing all of the players so that you can ask those questions and hold us accountable for getting the information. Because inasmuch as some people may not want something, there are people that do. So we owe transparency to both sides. And I want to make sure that if I say, I don't want to be at the table here, that I did it with both sides of the information and I can justify that vote in either direction. Because this is a huge project. I do hear our county is, we're overrun by other people and at the parks. That's one of the complaints is the parking spaces are filled with out of state people, which is why I think one of the suggestions is to not charge Bonner County residents, but outside residents. I hear from the people that have been focused on Camp Bay, they don't want to give away our access to land. That's been a huge thing in our county. The grant that is written, and I think it's worth sharing with people, it doesn't allow the county to give the, this, this land away. We cannot not use it for public access. That's not an option for that to become that. So knowing that, is there an option to increase opportunity for all of Bonner County through some type of an agreement? I think we need to listen to. But I hear the concern that Fred says and I understand that. But that grant does not allow the county, the city or Stan Craft to not make that public access. That's not an opportunity. It was gifted very specifically to require that. And I think that should allow us to have a little bit of, okay, now what? What do we do with it now? Because we've, didn't have the bathrooms open because we can't continue to pay out $7,000 every three months because of that maintenance. So how do we ensure that people then contacted Mayor Connolly over, our bathrooms are closed? So then I message and say, wait, we got a honey bucket out there. The people want to be at that park, but should we all, the whole county, pay those fees? That's where we're trying to balance it. Because we're not a big Parks and Rec county and neither is the city. And that's what we're hitting.
What I said though is, is that whatever you agreement you come to, make sure that it's poured in concrete and can never be changed. And I'll tell you the example, and that is, is that stupid trail that everybody agreed to. That trail benefits no one but the residents, period. I, I've talked to people who walk it once and they say they'll never walk it again. It's a waste of time and energy. Now they're rip wrapping the beach. There's no bathroom down there. At least there's a bathroom at this one. Whatever agreement you come to, pour it in concrete and make it so that it can never be changed and it's in the benefit of the taxpayers of this county.
All right. Any other comment?
I'll just either summarize or restate, I'm not sure at this point, but I think we've all expressed that there's an important need for the board of county commissioners to ensure that any decisions that get made are in the best interest of our county community and maintaining access to the waterfront. I would like to see and understand what options exist for that so that the board can make a well-informed decision about whatever option we think is the best option for the county community or our taxpayers and citizens. So I would, I would like us to explore and understand what those options look like so that we can make a well-informed decision. I don't have an opinion right now because I, I don't know what the options are. I think there's a potential of a good outcome if all the right, clear and critical pieces are in place. But I don't even, I wouldn't even suggest what that looks like right now. I don't, you know, I don't have the answer, but I would like us to participate in a conversation to better understand. Because I can see and understand from the city's perspective, that Bonner Park West is essentially a gateway to this new park that they're considering. And so from their perspective, it's a critical piece. From our perspective, we have a totally different view because, you know, we don't have consideration into the larger project that they're looking at. But I think we have been trying to figure out how to better maintain and utilize that for the citizens because it has been a struggle. And we know that part of it is we want the community to take better ownership and value the resource that they have and be more responsible with it so that we're not struggling on the maintenance side of it. And part of that has to do with how people view and value things. And so again, I just want to see, what are the options? What are the potential opportunities? And if in the end, we don't think that it's best for our citizens, we can, we can walk away from the table. But I'd like to know what those options are.
That's fair. Maybe somewhere's down the road, we can have a workshop or something. That might be a good thing to do once we have our options clear. And put it out to the public for input from them and see what we want to do. I think that's a good idea.
With very clear inclusion of those people that have expressed interest, because I also think that that helps us move forward in a. also think that that helps us move forward in a very crisp way. Inclusion of people like yourself in that conversation, all right?
I would suggest that, yeah.
Makes it easier in the long run. All right, Mayor Conley, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to come up and explain it. And then maybe you can include us on, like, when, if it's coming back to your city council meetings or, and then I, since I drive past you, I can stop and listen to you.
We'll stop you. I mean, we'll stop you.
You know, you gotta love him. Thank you. I know it was a long meeting. All right, we'll go. I know we're running a little bit behind. So we're on to District One updates.
Okay, I will be brief for the sake of our schedule. Go right ahead. So I just want to, I want to thank the Bonner County Amateur Radio Club. I was invited to and was able to visit during their field day on Saturday at Edgemere Grange. This is just an opportunity to acknowledge what they're doing and promote others who have an interest in amateur or ham radio. Those field days are a great way to, to train and to learn alternative emergency communication methods. And so I would encourage people who have an interest in that in reaching out to the Bonner County Amateur Radio Club. It's a good opportunity. There's still continuing to be a lot of comments that come in for different land use issues. And so those are being reviewed and responded to. I also want to just mention that we are continuing, Roden Bridge staff and myself and Legal are working with different interested neighbors for the railroad quiet zone consideration. And so at this point, I think we're one iteration away of our draft to be able to bring it to the board for the board to decide whether or not to adopt a new approach for allowing neighborhoods to form an organization to work with the county to pursue getting federal permitting for quiet zones in the county for railroad crossing areas. So we're getting really close on that. I wanted to mention that Representative Cornell Razor made the board aware of a document that came out of Ada County where they essentially summarized all of the state legislative mandates that force counties to spend money. And so he has requested or made available to us that if we want to offer feedback as a county to him as a state representative about things that we think could or should be changed at the legislature to reduce some of those mandated expenditures, that he would be welcoming that feedback. And so I really appreciate him reaching out to us to look for that feedback. So that's something that I plan to look at after we get through Board of Equalization and Budget season this summer. But come fall, it's one of the things I, I think would be really valuable for the board to look at to see whether or not we have recommendations on things that we don't think are necessary and appropriate mandates from the state for us to spend taxpayer dollars on. And then also, just a quick update, folks had asked about the county working toward amending our cell tower-related ordinances. And we did get buy-in from the county prosecutor to move forward with seeking special legal counsel who has expertise associated with the 1996 Telecommunications Act and how that affects rules and regulations associated with cell towers. And so they are going to pursue finding legal counsel that we could work with to aid the county's civil council so that we have that special knowledge at the federal level to work with our in-house counsel who are really familiar with state land use policies and our own county codes. So we are making progress in that direction. So hopefully, the board will have a recommended attorney that we could work with in the near future, and then the public will have more information at that time. And does anybody have any questions about the information that I just presented?
All right. I'll be super quick. I'll give you an update on my insurance question from a minute ago. Christian sent the policy over to our insurance, oh, he's sitting right there now. And they looked at it and said that we would be covered for that. And so just so you know, I'm always going to be the, I want to read it and know that we are covered, not just that they had coverage, because that protects us from a lot of things that happen with litigation. I'm not going to give a long update. I'm just going to point out with respect to the Firefighters 208 Ministries, if you've seen that online, Jordan Redman does do that, they're are matching donations for the individuals, up to $25,000. So I did say I was going to report that out. And thank you to all of those who have continued to show support for the families and the ongoing struggles that our first responders are having with the events that occurred over the weekend. We are going to do an update in terms of safety in Bonner County. Our risk manager is working on that, and Sheriff Wheeler is going to collaborate to kind of give a, what do we do? There's been quite a few things that have happened in our county over the last few weeks. But I've gotten a lot of comments on issues and concerns people want to address. Obviously, litigation is always on the top. There have been no payments of settlements out of our, our county. We're continuing to focus on the budget and fiscal responsibility. And one of my things is focusing on how we can move the county forward with the projects that we have in place, because we haven't really been creating those types of project budgets, really. And so with that, I will say, do you have any questions about what I said? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner Corn.
All right. Briefly, I just want to give a quick report on last Friday's presentation on fire defense. It's a great class. That should be uploaded to our YouTube channel, hopefully by the beginning of next week. Shaping up to be kind of a bad fire season this year with the lack of moisture. So if you're interested in learning how to better defend your property, I would suggest checking out that video if you didn't make that class. Also, I want to make a quick statement that the water repair, water leak at the fairgrounds, dump station has been repaired. For the dump station, not for filling containers. That's where the water leak was, and it's an ongoing problem. So for the time being, that water has been capped off and not available. But there is water available to wash out at the dump station. So that's all I have.
All right. Anybody for public comment? Wayne Martin?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, for the record. First, I'd like to offer prayers for the family of CDA Corlaine Fire Department and all the other first responders for roads and bridges. Duford Road was torn up where they put in a new tube. I don't know why, and curious as to who's paying for that? Is it the county residents, or was it installed incorrectly and having to be taken care of?
Mr. Martin, I can answer your question about Duford Road. If you're referring to the location where they replaced a culvert last fall, the contractor who did that work improperly installed the patch in the asphalt pavement there. And so Roden Bridge rejected that work and made them aware that they needed to come back and correct that this year. They did it late in the year. And so they ran up against weather and temperatures required to do proper asphalt work. And so they essentially put in a temporary patch. And that's the reason why that was torn out and put in properly just recently. And so there was no additional cost to the county that was covered by the contractor under their original contract.
Right, thank you. Chevrons on Vay Road, there are only two. Jason had said that they were going up. I have a concern safety-wise.
All right, thank you. Any other public, you pressed mute. So I'm assuming that that's all you wanted to say was you had a concern safety-wise?
Well, I did on the chevrons, accidental. There's only two. And there's a concern for that curve to begin with, especially with higher speeds down to lower. And in relationship to that, when you are going southbound on Vay and making your left, or sorry, your right turn onto Edgemere Cut Off, the 35-mile speed limit sign is partially blocked, greatly blocked by two limbs from two trees. That should be looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll follow up the director.
All right, seeing no further public comments, it is 11:00.